Let me know.
Okay, so we are here at the Main Street Advisory Board Special Meeting. It's Wednesday, June the 25th, 2025. It's 5:30 PM and we're here at the City Council Chambers at 100 South Monroe Street. And we have established a quorum. We do have Rudy Davenio with us and we have Anita Ramos Ramirez with us and myself, Rebecca Robinson. So we do have a quorum. Citizens Communication. Do we have any? There are no citizens communication. So the first order is the minutes. We have approval of the minutes for January 28, 2025 meeting. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I don't see the minutes attached.
Anita, motion?
Motion.
Second, second. Motion by Anita and second by Rudy. And so those minutes, all those in favor? Aye? Great. Approved unanimously. The next section that we have is a workshop and we have item number two, update on Simon's Foundation Math Covenant.
Awesome. So really exciting. We were invited to, well, the Main Street Program, so myself, I wish I could have taken everybody, but I was invited to go to New York to visit this organization called Simon's Foundation. Brief history on our relationship with the Simon's Foundation. Last year when we were in the path of totality for the eclipse. This organization partnered with Main Street America specifically targeting the Main Streets that were in the path of totality. Luckily, we were. So we did apply for a grant through a program that they were offering that did fund us for some telescopes. We were able to create a contest called Downtown Is Out of This World. We encouraged students to create math, or not math, but artwork that depicted downtown Eagle Pass if it was out of this world. We got almost 300 pieces submitted and we were able to gift 12 telescopes thanks to the donation, or the grant from Simon's Foundation to the winners of this contest. Now, the Simon's Foundation, a little bit of history on them. Their mission is to advance the frontiers of research in mathematics and the basic sciences, which is why they were involved so heavily in the Eclipse project. Since its founding in 1994 by Jim and Marilyn Simons, the foundation has been a champion of basic science through grant funding, support for research, and public engagement. We believe in asking big questions and providing sustained support to researchers working to unravel the mysteries of the universe. Through our work, we make space for scientific discovery. So of course, this was a big science initiative when they launched it for the eclipse and we kept great communication with them. They loved the events that Eagle Pass was doing. They still asked me about tacos and telescopes and if we're going to do it again, which I think we should. So they kept this in mind and they invited us back out. This time, they wanted to let us know that they were hosting a separate series for math. And they invited us out there to let us know how, in my case, a Main Street program can incorporate math engagement into our everyday programming. So they invited myself, other, a few other Main Street programs, and other organizations like children's museums, science museums. I got to network with a ton of really great people that want to help us with more than just this. Fingers crossed for a children's museum, but really great minds that really have Eagle Pass on their mind and want to help us in any way that we can. That's me right there in the picture. And they're just really, really willing to help. So somebody that I did meet on this, his name was Jeff Wheatcraft. Well, first of all, let me explain that this year, they're trying to focus on math. So they let us know kind of different dates that they are suggesting for us to really create math initiatives and how math can be integrated, of course, into our Main Street programming. So of course, with the help of this gentleman named Jeff Wheatcraft, he had been reaching out to the Simon's Foundation because, yes, they give grants, but they also just provide funding for any kind of programming that people want to create. So this gentleman, Jeff Wheatcraft, from San Antonio, he won Teacher of the Year in Texas in 2019. He's a big kind of advocate for education and helping teachers in and outside of the classroom engage with their students. He kept submitting proposals to them full transparency and they kept turning him down. So he said, what is it that you would like to see from me? And they said, you know what? Get with Sinead and Eagle Pass with her Main Street program and see if you guys can create a kind of pilot program of math activities for the year. Come up with some really neat things and submit it and see if we can fund that, how much of that we can fund. So together with me, Jeff, our team, we spoke to people like in the school board or school district and things like that. We came up with a few ideas that I want to relay to you guys right now. So the first one we suggested was a math series kickoff August. This one would take place in one of their math-inspired dates, which would be August 8, which they identify as Infinity Day, 8/8. So the overview of that would be to celebrate Infinity Day with a community-wide event, decide to launch our whole series, our whole math initiative, the Culture Plus Math Equals Community Series. This event would introduce students, teachers, and families to a year of math-powered culture activities through interactive games, artistic exploration, and hands-on fun. Teachers will preview upcoming programs while students dive into math-infused creativity. So we want to treat this one like the kickoff, like, hey, we're going to have a year of math. This is going to be kind of the kickoff, introducing them to it to kind of get people excited. Our next idea was a fun take on geometry. So we were saying math meets culture and we're thinking about Papel Picado and Piñata Workshop sometime in the fall. So a Hands-on Art and Math Crafting Day using traditional Hispanic crafts to explore geometry and symmetry. So we can learn about shapes while we're also paying attention to our culture and making, you know, creative aspects in that way. So of course, we can use the creative space for that. Another idea was a paint-by-numbers mural. And that one was, we were suggesting to do it on Fibonacci Day, which is another math day, but we're thinking of having it like a weekend thing where maybe we start it on Saturday as maybe a kind of block party and then, you know, kind of unveil the finished product of the mural on the 23rd. So this would be a community mural where each section is a color-coded base. So each section would be a math equation rather than a number. So kind of like a paint-by-numbers. So in order to figure out what color you have to paint that space, you have to do a math equation. So two plus two, four equals blue. So I'll paint this space blue. So of course, that would be a big collaboration with organizations like the Border Artist Society and it could be a really great way to showcase, you know, we can, and it's great to have all these organizations because then all these minds say, well, you can have the easier problems on the bottom for like the smaller kids and then, of course, maybe more basic algebra on the top for the taller, more adult kids and, you know, have interaction that way. So that's definitely an initiative. That can be a community-wide mural that we can do in downtown. That would be really neat. Another idea that we had was on Pi Day because it falls on a Saturday, March 14, 3/14. We thought we could start the day off with a Pi K instead of a 5K. So rather than five kilometers, we would make it a 3.14 kilometer fun run with math-themed checkpoints where runners solve simple math challenges, age-appropriate, of course, and they have to solve them to continue. And then later that day, we can do our math block party. This can be very similar to the typical block parties that we do. Last year around this exact time, we did our Selena Block Party, which was a really big hit because the weather was nice and it was, you know, right before spring break and it was awesome. So of course, we're thinking about a family-friendly festive block party with Pi-themed games. I can already see it, a pie eating contest, a pie baking contest. They can, you know, we can incorporate math into like their, what is it? Like the instructions of what they're baking and things like their recipes. And we can definitely make it a lot of fun. So that was the big initiative for Pi Day. And then we would end it with kind of an end-of-school-year math and science fair. So again, everything that we've learned throughout the year from what we, and we got with the school district on this. So it'd be a collaboration with the EPISD and of course, the school math clubs and science clubs to create an interactive booths and kind of just have a community fair where we can just make it really math-central and have games and just have a lot of fun and a fun way to close out the series. So with this, I've mentioned Mr. Jeff Wheatcraft. And so he was a teacher, but he later branched out to create his own consulting company called The Wheatcraft Project. So a little bit about him. He empowers educators with tools to support engaging students in thoughtful discovery of the natural world, the impacts and changes humans have made in creation of solutions to our toughest problems. I'm going to just read the last paragraph on this. Of course, I love his backstory and he, you know, moved with his wife and quit teaching to really help teacher, people engage because he's that kind of teacher that wanted to do more than what he could in the classroom. So in the last paragraph, it states his unique approach about capacity in students to develop a deeper sense of self-efficiency while understanding soft skill content and their purpose in the classroom. This cutting-edge course garnered him multiple accolades, including the Trinity Prize for Teaching Excellence and being named the 2019 Texas Teacher of the Year. As Director of STEM Education Growth at the Science Mill, he has supported students' growth specifically targeted at low-income rural communities who have limited access to high-quality STEM experiences. So fun fact about Jeff is that apart from this, he also had Eagle Pass on the mind and applied for a grant where he was able to create a coding class for our teachers. So in July, if there's any teachers listening, he's hosting a seminar at the Rysken where teachers have to just attend a four-day coding class. You get a $300 stipend for going to the class and during the course, you can learn how to code and make a jukebox. You learn how to code and make a racecar track and you learn how to code and make a pinball machine. And all of the materials that you're making with this, like the coding gadgets and everything, you get to keep for your classroom. You get a classroom set. So he received a grant on his end for Eagle Pass for a stipend for materials for all of this. So he's the one that's partnering with me in this, for this math initiative. So together, we've combined a budget of what we feel could be the, for the supplies and, you know, things like shirts, medals, whatever for the Pi K. Of course, his time and his experience, because he would be the math head behind a lot of our initiatives. And we want to submit that tomorrow, if we can, to Simon's Foundation. I did let him know I wanted to wait for this Main Street Board meeting to happen so that I can run this by you all and just kind of let Simon's Foundation know our Main Street Board is aware that we're wanting to do this and we're all, you know, excited about it and we definitely want to have a year of math. And, you know, the fun thing about this is that, yes, we're going for this funding and it's amazing, but a lot of these initiatives wouldn't really cost a whole lot and we could still do them regardless of this funding. So I definitely wanted to let you guys know about a lot of these ideas because if anybody says, hey, I kind of want to take that one on, by all means, let's go. Like the Pi K is such a fun, easy initiative that we can just take on. I'll definitely make a block party because, you know, we do anyways. So just a cool way, the big takeaway of this organization and what I learned is that even in our regular events, we can incorporate science, math engagement. And we learned that a lot of kids get deterred from it very quickly. So if we just, you know, keep introducing it in a really fun way, we can help them in their development all throughout. So that was a little brief history of what I learned in New York and the relationships that we made and what can come of that, from that whole experience. So that was, that's going to be our year of math. So that's just a little bit of that one. So I think we're ready to move on to that. I don't know if you have any questions?
Well, that's a great report. Thank you very much.
Of course.
So we'll go on to workshop, item number three, update on the next steps for promotion of programs and community events.
Amazing. So last year briefly, we tried to launch a community-wide holiday that we were trying to dub 830 Day. Now, we were given the idea by Mr. Will Mejia because he was inspired that Houston does something very similar. We just were told like two weeks in advance and we didn't have a whole lot of time, but we loved the idea. So now we're in June and we have time to plan and launch it. So today, actually, the Economic Development Department held a Jot Fair and we kind of soft-launched it with the businesses there. So our goal, yeah, let me put these on the... Our goal would be for, not necessarily for us to host a big event, but more so for businesses to promote themselves. So I went by the booths, for example, and I let business, I gave them all this flyer and I let them know that if their business organization is interested in hosting any kind of special, maybe you're a food place and you want to have a food combo special for $8.30. Or you're a boutique and you want to have a flash sale at 8:30. Or anything that you can think of that incorporates 830. By all means, let's create a special, let's have a big family, you know, community event and we'll promote you. So I let everybody know if you're a business and you're interested in creating a special and having any kind of promotion, scan this QR code and we'll put it, we'll make it live on Facebook tomorrow. We're encouraging to scan the QR code and let us know what it is that you're wanting to do so we can promote you. This is how we can promote any business that's wanting to have anything grand on 830 Day. That way, our community knows that there's going to be a lot of fun happening on that day, community-wide day. We want to make shirts with this design and, you know, make it really special. So that can be an initiative that we can take on, of course, as the Main Street Board, spreading the word throughout our downtown as well as our other connections, of course, sharing it across the city. And that would be a really fun initiative that hopefully can be, you know, an annual tradition that we started from here on forward. So 830 Day, of course, would be on August 30, 830. And yeah, community, a community event celebrating culture in our city and our pride. So that's a big initiative that we're going to be launching and working on promoting because it's the next one coming up in October. I mean, August, August 30. So do you have any questions on that one?
No. That sounds like a great idea. Looking forward to that.
I can, I'll send you these exact flyers right now in our group so you guys can feel free to share and the more sign-ups amazing, we'll promote everybody. And tomorrow, we're going to go live on Facebook with these. I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware and, you know, we're letting everybody know and that way, we'll start, we'll start going live. This is technically going live already, which by all means, everybody, sign up. It's going to be a fun time. But yes, that'll be, that'll be a great initiative and, you know, just keeping the community together. And if there's any pageant organizations that want to have, let's say, a Mr. and Mrs. 830, we can highlight them on that day. It's a Saturday, too, to top it off, so it can be a really fun day.
Awesome. That's great.
I love it. So that's, that's that initiative. And a lot of other programming we have later on, so we can keep on going in. We have more to...
Thank you very much. That sounds very rewarding to have on August 30th. Awesome. Other business, we have item number four, discussion and possible approval of a facade improvement grant application for the property located at 438 East Main Street, submitted by Sylvia Mijares.
So this is a really fun project. It's a big one. So Ms. Mijares is undertaking a really big project, which I definitely fully support and we're here for her. Just for your reference, it's this building that's on Main Street. It is her intention to remove the stucco and fix the roof of her building so that she can use it, she can lease it. She has, I believe, apartments in the upstairs that she would like to maybe make, you know, like a multi-use building. So she finally, you know, decided to take it on, which we're here for. So she did officially submit her grant. She did submit her two quotes as she's meant to. And the overall costs were over the $40,000, which is kind of our cap for any kind of facade improvement grant. So as you can see, she provided quotes for her roof fixtures, which we have from Mireles Roofing and Remodeling Company. The total for that was $15,884. And then we have from Sanchez Services, the total of that was $23,364. Of course, we can give our recommendation on who she should provide. Usually, we just tell them, you know, which one do you feel more comfortable going with? And we'll go from there. Because at the end of the day, there is a cap to this fund, the fund. So she is going to have to pay out of pocket regardless. So we're just here to help with the amount of funding that we do have. So, and then she also submitted quotes for the stucco. So for, she actually got three quotes for that one. Two are the only thing that are required, but she submitted three. So she has, first signed stucco in stone from demolition and of course, windows and then removing the stucco, $23,023. She has this other quote from Mejia Great Plastering for $26,800. And then, of course, she had from Gerardo Torres Painting and Remodeling for $58,500. So in the most expensive, her project comes out to roughly $80,000. So it's my recommendation to approve awarding her a grant of $20,000, which is our cap. So for this grant, just as a refresher and for anybody out there that wants to know, it is a 50% reimbursement of what you spend up to $20,000. So if you spend $40,000, you qualify for the 20, but anything after that, it's still 20. So that's our cap. So it's my recommendation to give her, approve her for the cap of $20,000. And of course, we make sure that she follows the due diligence and everything like that, but that's my recommendation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion on this item? Anita? Okay, a second. Rudy? Okay. Anita has motioned to approve the facade improvement grant application for the property located at 438 East Main Street, submitted by Sylvia Mijares. And Rudy has seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Okay. It's unanimous. All right. So let's go to item number five, discussion and possible action of a certificate of appropriateness for a property located at 438 East Main Street, submitted by Sylvia Mijares.
So it's this similar project. So anybody that needs to do any kind of improvements in downtown, they do have to submit this certificate of appropriateness, just letting us know what those changes are. In this case, we know because she also submitted a facade grant application. So I had recommended to her to submit them both at the same time because they both do have to go through a Main Street Board to not have to waste her time anymore. So basically, the certificate of appropriateness is for this project. So of course, it's my recommendation to approve her application so she can move forward.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the action of certificate of appropriateness for the property located at 438 East Main Street, submitted by Sylvia Mijares? So moved by Anita and seconded by Rudy? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Unanimous. Item number six, discussion and possible action for the approval of updates and modifications to the Main Street Facade Improvement Grant.
Perfect. So this one has been something we've been working on for quite some time. So the facade improvement grant, we've had for a while. And at the moment, how it stands, the facade improvement program is only for facade improvements. So if you're trying to fix anything in the outside and at times, the roof. It's our recommendation to change it to where we can also include some interior fixtures that are necessary for these old historic buildings to be leased. So things like plumbing, electrical, fire suppression system, things that are going to be very costly in a historic building. So in our first suggestion for change, of course, the name, since it's no longer going to be solely facade, Downtown Improvement Grant, similar to what we have for the rest of the city called Business Improvement Grant. Of course, everything here is saying the same. The red lines you're seeing are just changing Facade Improvement Program to Downtown Improvement Program. So as I scroll down, the main changes are right here in C, under Eligible Improvements, where we're going to be including energy conservation improvements. So if they're trying to include anything to conserve energy, electrical work, including service upgrades, fire alarm systems, fire sprinkler systems, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, lighting, plumbing, and restoration of historic interior architectural features. Because a lot of times, that's not taken into consideration because it's not on the outside. So if there's any inside that's historic and we want to preserve, of course, light fixtures, ceilings, anything, let's do it. And then, of course, utility service upgrades, including water and sewage. A lot of times, yes, these buildings look really pretty on the outside, but they're not leasable. You can't lease them because they're, they still need a lot of work on the inside. So we want our program to be able to also help with those. We're not, we're not going to be buying their tables or, you know, fixing anything other than what necessarily needs to be fixed for them to then be able to move forward and do the rest. So we also made a change down here to where an applicant can qualify for up to $40,000 if their project is big enough. So originally, it was a 10,000 square foot building. I kind of looked around and there's not a whole lot of buildings in downtown that are 10,000 square feet. So I brought it down to 5,000 because that's still a fairly large building. And also, the other qualification to qualify for that funding is for the project cost to be over $70,000. So still a fairly large project and we want to be able to help you with funding of that. So that's another change that we're recommending in here. And then we removed, well, we removed the caps. So previously, there was caps, so like for the electrical box, it only gave you 750. Now that we're including that as an eligible improvement, it can be any amount that you're needing. And then this one was also for the fire suppression system because there was also a cap for that one. Again, if you need more than the $10,000, because fire suppression systems are probably the most costly thing in a historic building, of course, we want to be able to help you with that. And then ineligible improvements, of course, we removed some things. So roof repairs, we removed that because, again, if a person's roof isn't fixed and it's leaking, they can't lease it. And then I also removed second-hand stores because it occurred to me that that could also be like vintage stores or, you know, those really nice shops that are selling in downtown. And so those are two things that I removed from ineligible improvements. And then, of course, the guidelines, the only changes to that were the wording from facade improvement to downtown improvement. So the main changes are what we included in the eligible improvements and then what we removed from the ineligible improvements. So of course, I'm open to hearing your feedback. Of course, we did a lot of research, talking to businesses and seeing what it is that their needs were to really assess if these changes were necessary. And we were excited and felt it was time to bring these changes to the table because, you know, a lot of people weren't applying for the facade and they said, I don't need to paint my building, I need to fix the inside. So we said, okay, well, let's see how we can help with that.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the updates and the modifications to the Main Street Facade Improvement Grant to be now named the Downtown Improvement Grant to include everything that was just presented? Is there a motion? So moved by Anita and seconded by Rudy? Although, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Awesome. I think that's going to be a great, great for the community downtown. And I think it's going to really help everybody.
Oh, we're excited to push it now. The new one, we'll push it tomorrow, too, so that'll be interesting.
I think that's going to be awesome and I think it's a great, you know what? You should do a little presentation at the Chamber of Commerce for the Rysken.
Hey, actually, I want to start a little podcast and have all of you guys, a Main Street podcast, and have you guys on there promoting these events because I want to shine the light on y'all. So yeah, we can definitely be promoting them and with y'all's help, I'm here for it.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for all the work that you and your committee are doing. And last but not least, we have item number seven, discussion and possible approval of the Monarch Butterfly mural rendering.
So yes, so we're excited. We've been on this monarch buzz, if you've noticed, with our new hike and bike trail after Cynthia Muniz, the Monarch Butterfly Trail. And of course, in our plans for downtown, we want to have pollination stations everywhere in proposed parks and in different landmarks. You know, we are in the path of migration for the butterflies, the monarch butterflies. And last I read, they were about 80 or 90% in decline. So these pollination stations kind of just give them the boost they need to keep going. So what a cute cause. And Ms. Aida, our Marketing Director, just received an application that we were approved to be considered a monarch city. So we want to continue that vibe and that theme. So we found a local artist from here. Her name's Ms. Yasselin and she's part of the Border Art Society. And she gave us a couple renderings. So she designed them to where these are like the wings that you can stand in front of. So we have proposed locations for them. Tomorrow, I'm going to be talking to business owners. There's one business owner, well, there's two business owners that are really open for us to be putting murals on their space. I'm hoping to lean towards something that might be around the future park area that would be kind of complimenting them. So this was one of her ideas. The only thing that's really changing are the wording. And she just let me know that this was like a basic font. Of course, she's going to make it very murally and beautiful. But so this would be one option, aquí cruza mariposa si sueños, of course, describing the migration and the path of migration. This was going to be one of our suggested walls that we're going to see if they're loving this mural just as much as we are. And then, of course, she even outlined, you know, if you're this tall, this tall, this tall, this is how you'll look in front of the mural if it's this height. And then the other suggestion was these words, nacimos el sol, el viento, y la frontera. So our instructions to her, we want the butterfly to symbolize, you know, our love for our border town living, our culture, and of course, what they represent. She kind of just, you know, went off with it and we were loving it. So of course, she also gave us renderings on how that one would look and the height. So of course, we can, and she was super open to feedback. So if we don't like either, we can make our own suggestions or we can come together. But we really loved the idea of a monarch butterfly. I was loving both of these things and I was asking my team for feedback and I said, yeah, I'm going to also take it to my Main Street Board to get their feedback. So the floor is yours. I'm open to your feedback. Let me know what you think.
I love the idea. It's a beautiful butterfly. She did an awesome job.
Yeah. And so which of any of these two, if any, would you...
Can you add like for children, too? Like maybe a little butterfly?
Oh my God, that would be cute. Okay, I'll tell her. That's a really good idea. Like one of these side ones could be a tiny stand-up one. That's cute. Yeah. That's a great suggestion. I can...
That one's for like the average person.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a great idea.
If I feel... I like that idea a lot. I'll let her know that. Any other feedback?
Or make it even wider, you know?
Like, use the wall, right?
Yeah. I mean, that's a, that's a big wall, so...
Like, don't be scared to use the wall.
No, don't be scared.
Okay. I'll let her know that. I'll let her know that.
Yeah.
I think she was, I think she created these measurements based off of the other wall we were looking at, but, yeah, I'll let her know not, not to be afraid to just use the wall.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, because then you could add those other butterflies and make it more, more interactive. Okay. I like that. I'll definitely let her know any, any other. Which one are we liking?
And I would go with one of each if she's going to go with two different sides. One in one side and the other on the other side.
We're okay with both, with either?
I like that idea.
Or trees or something, you know, like...
Like vegetation?
Something. It's something greenery on the sides.
I think when we went to the ceremony over at Cynthia's Monarch Butterfly area, that one of the things they gave us was seeds of flowers. So, maybe incorporate some of the flowers that the monarch are attracted to.
Yeah, they're, they're, you know, it's some type of weed that they like a lot.
Yeah, there's certain, I don't know what flowers are. I was telling us that...
It could maybe even be like an educational thing. Like, we can write the names of the, so, I mean, anybody can really have a pollination station at their house, just plant the plants. So, it'd be cool to let people know, that can be a way to let people know what kind of plants that they need to save the butterflies.
Yeah, exactly.
I love that. Those are great recommendations. I'll definitely let her know so we can move forward with this one.
If we have to choose one or the other, I mean, not one or the other better, but I like the first phrase.
Aquí cruzan mariposas y sueños?
I guess that one, I like that one.
I like that one, too.
Okay, great.
Because I feel it's very general.
General, like, all of our dreams and the butterflies because they do...
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter whatever.
Okay. So, when we make the motion, do you all want to say to include the first one? Maybe add the children's?
Yeah, maybe add children.
And then, a little bit bigger.
Okay.
And a little bit bigger.
All right. So, let me go ahead and we do need a motion to approve of the Monarch Butterfly mural rendering with the recommendations that were just stated by the board. How's that?
Yes.
Okay. Motion by, motion by Rudy, second by Anita. Any discussion? All those in favor? Awesome. Unanimous. So, that comes to the end of our meeting, our adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? So, B, Rudy, and second by Anita, all those in favor? Here we go. Meeting is adjourned at exactly six o'clock. Man, we're pretty good.